Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection. Please remember our servicemen and women throughout the world and also for those who have passed away in our community. Roll call please.
Mr. Perry.
Here.
Mr. Rogan.
Here.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Mr. Gahn.
Here.
Mr. Wexler.
Here. Dispense the reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A, no business at this time. Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Mr. President, good morning. Gerald Cross, Pennsylvania Economy League, Act 47 Coordinator. I'm honored to see Mayor Connors here, I'm honored to see the council here. I did want to make a special effort today to attend the sign and die session to offer my congratulations, both to the city on a productive four years, but more importantly, to acknowledge the efforts of Mr. Gahn, I'm sorry, Mr. McGough and Mr. Wexler. I would say that last four years started with a lowest level of the 25 years we have worked here. It is now finishing on a very high note. I want to acknowledge Mr. Wexler's continued movement towards cooperation as a legislative branch. The idea of local government is a commitment to constancy and uniformity of services. And I want you to know that I think over the last four years, you have made an effort to provide constant service to the citizens of Scranton. And I think that Mr. McGough's memory is honored by the efforts this council has put together. So thank you very much, and I look forward to seeing you all, plus the new people, in 2018. I'm rarely at a loss for words, but standing here in the...
A little different, right?
...acknowledging everyone here, I appreciate the efforts you have all put together for the last four years. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jerry. Now, there is no Pell meeting today, right? There is no Pell meeting today.
You won't attend because you will no longer be an officer. However, we will. The weekly meetings are open, of course, to all council people. They're attended by administration people and council, and you're welcome to attend. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jerry. It was a pleasure working with you.
It was, and I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
Fifth order, 5A, motions.
Mr. Perry?
Yeah, just very quickly. I know we spoke on this during our last meeting, but again, I just want to thank and congratulate Mr. Wexler for an outstanding job that I thought you've done, my two years here and the two years that preceded me. You made some very difficult choices, and I do appreciate your leadership that you gave us. I know I've grown a lot from that, and I hope to continue forward on all the progress that we made so far. And I just want to thank you for your service, and like I said, you know, not only are you my colleague, but you're my friend now, and I wish you the best in whatever you wish to do.
Thank you, Mr. Perry.
Thank you.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I'm echoing some of what Mr. Perry mentioned, and much of this was mentioned at our last council meeting. But I would also like to congratulate Council President Wexler on a tremendous term where much was accomplished, and without his leadership, we wouldn't have had all of those accomplishments. I'm proud to say that I voted the same way with Mr. Wexler, I think the vast majority of the time, and I believe we voted in the right way to keep the city moving in the right direction. And those, the fruits of those labors, we're finally starting to see now, in a city that is much more financially stable than it was four years ago, as Mr. Cross mentioned, when the city was at one of its lowest points in the city's history. And now we stand here where we've had two years with no tax increases. Our city services are finally starting to improve back to the level where they should be at, and much of that is because of the leadership that Councilman Wexler took, being council president. His actions were never politically motivated, but motivated by the city's best interests. And as Mr. Perry mentioned, proud to call you a colleague, proud to call you a friend, and you will be missed.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rogan. Mr. Evans?
Thank you. As you may know, this meeting today is called Sign Die, which simply put means adjournment. So we are adjourning the city council of the last two years for the final time today. This city council has made great strides in moving this city forward. We've been transparent, professional, and diligent in our efforts to help the city of Scranton. We stood our ground, we felt it was right, we saw a compromise when it was appropriate, and we didn't allow the negative noise to sway our beliefs in what needed to be done. With that said, you cannot achieve any of this without a good team. So we had our city clerk, Lori Reed, and our staff, Attorney Menora, and of course, Council President Joe Wexler. In a few minutes, Joe will no longer be a Scranton City Councilman. But Joe, your legacy is one of stepping up, of leading, and always doing what you truly believed was the right thing for the city of Scranton. I know I said it before, it has been my pleasure to serve with you as Scranton City Council President. So Joe, thank you very much, good luck, and all the best.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Mr. Gahin?
Yes, thank you. You know, this is a day that we recognize Councilman Wexler, and I want to thank him for his commitment to public service, his commitment to the city over the last four years, and really for his entire life. You know, I've seen firsthand the dedication and the passion that Joe Wexler has for helping people and neighborhoods throughout our city, and that will be his legacy, being somebody that you can pick up the phone and call him, and he will answer, and he will help you. I know how proud Joe's family is of him, and they should be, because he performed his duties with honor and integrity. I want to personally thank him for his service on council, but more importantly, for his friendship, and I want to wish him the best of luck in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gahin. Kathy, don't hit the bell, they're going to be going on for a while. Now, actually, my comments are going to be quite brief, but they are very important to me. The first thing I want to do is thank my family for supporting me through these four years, and actually, for all. I started off seeking political office in 1999. I'm not from a political family, I'm not Irish, and if you didn't notice that, I know. But we started off, Kathy, my wife Kathy and I started off not knowing one person in politics. Gradually, we went out, we worked, we worked, sought office a few times, came close a few times, and finally, I was fortunate enough to win in 2013, to start serving in 2014. And as Mr. Cross said, when we got here in 2014, the city was on the verge of bankruptcy. There was very little interest in anyone running for council, but Mr. Rogan, Mr. Gahin, myself, we stepped up back then, and we started to work with the administration. We accomplished so many different things that looked impossible to do. We got out of the problems of the parking authority, we got new contracts that brought labor peace to the city for a while, and we began to work on pension reform, where right now, the pension system is the strongest it's been in many years. So I'd like to acknowledge my wife Kathy, she's here today, my children Amy and Drew, they're huge supporters of mine, and then that's where I want to start off, at the end of this part of my life, thanking my wife where we started off at the beginning. I'd also like to thank the members of council that I've served with. Bob McGough was our president when I started. Bob really laid the groundwork for how I wanted to be a city councilman. Only had the best interests of the city at heart. We miss Bob McGough, but he'll never be forgotten, and he was truly a great man, and I'd like to thank him and his family for their support also. And also, on my tenure in council, I also served with Jack Loscom. Jack was a good councilman, he gave the dedication to the city, and he was also part of the regional council. And I would like to thank Mr. Perry, Mr. Rogan, Mr. Evans, and Mr. Gahin for the hard work that they do. On Thursday evening, a lot of people think that council people work Thursday from 6:00 to 9:00. Being on city council is a full-time job. There's constant calls, you try to help what you can, and before I go, there's a pothole on East Mountain Road that needs serious attention, so I'll start calling tomorrow. Lori, I'll call you tomorrow, and we'll hook somebody up to get that pothole fixed. But city council really is the first place people come for help, and I'm not sure if it should be that way, but that's the way that it is. People come, call us, we try to help them as best we can, and for the most part, I think we are successful in addressing people's concern. The constituent service that comes out of our office is amazing. I'd like to thank Solicitor Menora for his insight, Kathy Carrera, always does an awesome job. But I do want to do a special thank you to Mrs. Reed. Lori's in the office all the time, she's a help to everyone. I'm not sure if any of you have ever worked for five bosses, five different bosses, and it's difficult to juggle what goes on in the office and handling five, sometimes difficult councilmen. But I do like to thank Mrs. Reed for what she's done. I'd also like to take the opportunity to thank Mayor Bill Courtrite and his administration. We worked with them. From day one, we were given access to the administration, much greater than any other group it ever had. I especially want to thank former business administrator Dave Bolzoni, who always gave us the information and worked diligently in moving the city forward. I also want to thank all the DPW Director, Chief of Police, and Fire Chief. Once again, those three agencies are the people that touch the taxpayers on a consistent basis. DPW, Mr. Gallagher, Chief Graziano, Chief Disarno, they provide the service to the city, and they're awesome people to work with, and I'm happy that they're all staying. So, we're coming to the end. It's kind of like sitting at your own eulogy here today, but I'm not ready for that yet. I'm not ready for that yet. For me, I've always, as Mr. Gahin said, have always been active in the community. I'm going to continue to do that. I am going to try to be a leader in the community still. Our neighborhood system here is awesome, people that work, and the leadership in our neighborhood associations do a lot of work, and they do it all for free, and they deserve more recognition than they get. So, I don't know if there's a right word to say goodbye, but I want to just thank everyone for what they've done for me. I've met so many friends and voters out in the community. Scranton is a great place, and I hope that going forward, I know that my colleagues here, Mr. Donahue is going to be joining them in a short while, I know that they will continue to service the people and continue to cooperate with the administration in moving Scranton forward. So thank you so much for this opportunity. I won't be here, but I will be somewhere. So thank you very much.
5B, no business at this time. Sixth order, 6A, no business at this time. Seventh order, 7A, no business at this time.
If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. This meeting is adjourned.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation by Father Sam Ferretti.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let us pray. God our Father, you guide everything in wisdom and love. Accept the prayers we offer for our city council as they assume a new term of government. Continue in your goodness to watch over and to bless those who accept the responsibility of government, so that people everywhere may enjoy freedom, security, and peace. And we ask this through Christ our Lord.
In accordance with the Home Rule Charter of the city of Scranton designating the first Monday of January as the day for city council to reorganize, I hereby call this 2018 reorganization meeting to order. Roll call please.
Mr. Perry.
Here.
Mr. Donahue.
Here.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Mr. Gahn.
Here.
Mr. Rogan.
Here.
At this time, I ask that as you were called to be sworn in, would the judges and elected officials please sign the documents when you're finished? I have before me the certificates of election for William Gahin, Pat Rogan, and Kyle Donahue as city council persons. Will the council adopt a motion to the effect that the certificates be received and ordered filed and made a part of the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved. I will now ask the Honorable Judge Thomas Monley to come forward and administer the oath of office to Mr. Gahin for the elected office of city council.
Judge.
Do you want to use a mic?
Sure, whatever we can do. I have a big mouth.
Uh-oh.
Wonderful family. All right? Put your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand, please. And repeat after me, councilman. I, state your name.
Bill Gahn.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will protect, obey, and defend.
That I will protect, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Pennsylvania.
And the Constitution of the State of Pennsylvania.
And I will perform my duties.
I will perform my duties.
As councilman.
As councilman.
For the city of Scranton.
For the city of Scranton.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
So help me God. Councilman, thank you very much.
He's enjoying himself.
How are you, Mr. Gahn? I will now ask the Honorable Judge Terrence Nealan to come forward and administer the oath of office to Mr. Rogan for the elected office of city council.
Someone's going to hold the microphone.
Hi, how are you? Happy New Year, good, thank you.
I'd like to thank Pat for asking me to swear him in again. I had the pleasure of swearing him in in January 2010, January 2014, and now January 2018. I don't know whether he's a traditionalist or just plain superstitious, but either way, I'm proud to do it. So if you could just place your left hand, you're going to have to get on the other side here. She'll be on the end. There you go. Your left hand on the above, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Patrick Rogan.
I, Patrick Rogan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
And I will discharge the duties of my office.
As a member of Scranton City Council.
As a member of Scranton City Council.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I will now ask the Honorable Judge Terrence Nealan to administer the oath of office to I will now ask the Honorable Judge Terrence Nealan to administer the oath of office to Mr. Donahue for the elected office of city council.
And again, I'd like to thank Kyle as well. I've known Kyle since he was a young boy. I grew up with his mother and father in South Scranton, and Kyle, when he was in college, interned in my chambers, and I had the pleasure of swearing him in to Scranton School Board, and again, it's a privilege for me to do it again this time. So again, if you could place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Kyle Donahue.
I, Kyle Donahue.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
As a member of Scranton City Council.
As a member of Scranton City Council.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
I will now accept nominations for temporary chairperson. What is your pleasure?
I move that Mr. Wayne Evans be appointed temporary chair.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved. Mr. Evans, will you please take over as temporary chairperson?
Yes, I will, thank you. I now call for the nomination of a permanent president of council for the ensuing two years.
I nominate Mr. Pat Rogan as president for city council.
On the question? Roll call.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
No.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
No.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
The motion is adopted, and I declare Mr. Rogan duly and legally elected president of Scranton City Council. I now call for the nomination of vice president of council for the ensuing two years.
I nominate Mr. Timothy Perry as vice president of city council.
Second. On the question? Roll call please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
The motion is adopted, and I declare Mr. Perry duly and legally elected vice president of Scranton City Council. I now ask for nominations for city clerk.
I nominate Mrs. Lori Reed, city clerk.
Second. On the question?
Yes, on the question, I'm going to be voting for Mrs. Reed as I did four years ago, and as Councilman Wexler said earlier in the Sign i Die meeting, Mrs. Reed is one of the most professional people in City Hall. She is a person that does her job with integrity and honesty, and it has been such a pleasure to work with her over the last four years, and as my son said, every time we drive by City Hall, he calls this Lori's Castle. So I just appreciate all the hard work that she's done, and it's really been a pleasure to work with her, and I look forward to four more years of that. Thank you.
Roll call please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
The motion is adopted, and I declare Mrs. Reed duly and legally elected city clerk.
At this time, I would like to make a motion that city council reappoint Attorney Amel Menora to the position of city council solicitor.
Second. There's a motion on the floor, and a second. On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Yes.
The ayes have it, and so moved. I will now ask Councilman Rogan to come forward to be sworn in as council president
I, Patrick Rogan.
I, Patrick Rogan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
That I will discharge my duties.
That I will discharge my duties.
As president of Scranton City Council.
As president of Scranton City Council.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
So help me God.
I will now ask Councilman Perry to come forward to be sworn in as council vice president by the Honorable Judge Terrence Nealan. I should have told you to stay up here.
I, Tim Perry, do solemnly swear, do solemnly swear, that I will support, obey, and defend. That I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
That I will discharge my duties.
That I will discharge my duties.
As vice president of Scranton City Council.
As vice president of Scranton City Council.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
So help me God.
I will now ask Mrs. Reed to come forward to be sworn in as city clerk by the Honorable Judge Paul Ware. I will now ask that Mr. Rogan take over as permanent chairman and president of Scranton City Council.
Thank you, Councilman Evans. We are now ready to consider the rules of procedure by which this council will be governed over the next two years. What is your pleasure?
I move that the rules of council be adopted by Resolution Number One, 2018, as required by the Home Rule Charter.
Second.
Mrs. Reed, would you please read the resolution?
Resolution Number One, 2018, adopting the rules in order of business of the Scranton City Council, Scranton, Pennsylvania.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved. The following will be the committee chairpersons for the next two years. Committee on Rules, myself. Committee on Finance, Mr. Evans. Committee on Public Works, Mr. Gahn. Committee on Public Safety, Mr. Perry. And Committee on Community Development, Mr. Donahue. The chairpersons for the subcommittees will be as follows. Pension Review and Administration will be myself. Economic Development will be Mr. Donahue. Boards and Commissions will be Mr. Perry. Revenue and Taxes will be Mr. Evans. And Intergovernmental Relations will be Mr. Gahn. I will now call on each council member for a few brief remarks. Mr. Perry, do you have any comments at this time?
Just very briefly, I just wanna thank everybody for coming out and supporting us and supporting our city. That's very important, and it's always great to see such community involvement, which the city of Scranton always has. I just wanna send a special thank you out to my wife Lori. She was unable to attend tonight or today, but I know she would really like to, and my whole family for just to support. Anybody who's active in the community or in the public sector knows that your family is your backbone, and you're only as strong as your family props you up to be. And I know my family goes 110% for me. I also wanna congratulate Councilman Donahue on the newest member to council. I'm looking forward to working with him, and I know he's gonna do a great job. And also, congratulations to Mr. Gahan and Mr. Rogan on their win as well. I'm excited to work again for the city for another two years, to finish my term out, and to get back to work with my new set of colleagues, and let's get some stuff done. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Donahue, do you have any comments at this time?
Yes, just briefly. First off, I would like to just first thank my beautiful fiancee, Mary Kate, for continuing to always be standing by my side and for always supporting me 100%. I would not be sitting here today without an outstanding support system. So I must absolutely thank my family, especially my wonderful parents, and all my friends that have been so supportive. I really can't thank you all enough. A couple weeks ago, I received a letter from the mayor. He congratulated me on my win, talked about his cooperation with council on his first term, and that he looked forward to working with me. And to be completely honest with you, as I was reading through the letter, I started to get a little angry. Not because I didn't appreciate the sentiment, but because nothing that was said in the letter couldn't have been done in a two-minute phone call. From Washington on down, government stopped working for the people because we... People in general, but especially politicians, talk at one another instead of talking with one another. Over the next four years, as we exit distress status, the decisions we're gonna have to make are gonna determine the course of this city for a generation. No one person will be able to do it alone. This must be a group effort from the mayor on down. We must be willing to talk to one another about the issues we face. I'm looking forward to working with the administration and the rest of council to move this city in the right direction. Thank you.
Mr. Evans, do you have any comments at this time?
Yes, first of all, congratulations to Mr. Rogan and Mr. Perry on your elections to president and vice president. I'm looking forward to working with both of you on your new positions on City Council. We've had a very good relationship in the past, and I continue to hope that we have the same professional path under your leadership that we enjoyed under Council President McGough and Council President Wexler. I would like to welcome back Councilman Gahn and formally congratulate him on his second term on City Council. Mr. Gahn and I have a very good working relationship. I have the utmost respect for him and what he's tried to accomplish while he's on City Council. He is the very definition of a prepared, conscientious, and independent councilman. So Bill, good luck on Act Two. And finally, I'd like to welcome incoming City Councilman Kyle Donahue. To say I've known Kyle all his life would certainly be accurate. One of my wife's first and childhood friends and best friends was Kyle's Aunt Mary Ellen. And one of my longest and dearest friends is Kyle's uncle, retired Marine Colonel Charles Chuck Rushworth, who is here today with his beautiful wife, Robin. So Kyle, I know your aunts and uncles, friends and family are very proud of the person, the young man you have become, especially your parents, Danny and Beth, and of course, Mary Kate. I wish you only the best, and I know you will be an effective, caring, and visionary councilman. So again, all the best, and thank you for joining us on Scranton City Council. That's all I have today.
Thank you. Mr. Gahn, any comments at this time?
Yes, thank you. First of all, I'd like to wish everybody a Happy New Year, and thank you for being here on this frigid January 1st. I'd like to start off by thanking my very good friend, Judge Tom Munley, for swearing me in. I wanna recognize some of the dignitaries and officials in the audience today. Mayor Connors is here with us today. Mayor Peters. Commissioner Pat O'Malley. And Councilman John Poshous. So thank you so much for coming today. I'd like to congratulate Councilman Rogan on becoming our new president and on his victory for City Council. I also wanna congratulate Kyle Donahue on his victory. I'm looking forward to working with them over the next four years, along with Councilman Evans and Councilman Perry, and I wanna congratulate them on becoming vice president. I'd also like to congratulate our solicitor, Amel Menora and Lori Reed, and I look forward to working with them over the next four years. I also wanna congratulate Mayor Courtright on his reelection, and I'm looking forward to working very closely with him as well. I am extremely honored to be able to serve the people of the city of Scranton for another four years. It's my strong belief, and it always has been, that public service is an obligation and a responsibility. It's important that we, as citizens, give back to our community, that we become involved in government and in civic affairs. Many people shy away from public service, even speaking up on important issues because of the scrutiny and criticism that sometimes comes along with it. I'm reminded of what Aristotle once said, "To avoid criticism, say nothing, do nothing, be nothing." Now more than ever, we need young people to get involved in public service, run for office, and make a difference. Everyone in these chambers today understands the sacrifice that comes along with running for public office and being involved. It's impossible to do it alone. I am extremely blessed and extremely grateful to my family and friends who worked so hard on my campaign for reelection and believed in me every step of the way, and I have so many people to thank. First of all, I'd like to thank my wife Kelly. I don't think she's in the room now. She's chasing around a two-year-old and a one-year-old. I would consider her, at this point, after the last two years with two children, to be a saint, really. She is the wonderful mother of our two sons, Jack and Murphy. To say our life has been an adventure since we met seven years ago would be a major understatement, and I think she would agree with me if she was in the room. Kelly has stuck by my side through it all, even... And I wanted to apologize in the beginning. I wasn't here the last two council meetings because I had my appendix out. Now, she'd be sick if I told the story again, because everybody I've run into, I'm telling them about getting my appendix out. But I wanted to apologize for being absent and thank her for being the best nurse in the city of Scranton. So I can't thank her enough, and I love her dearly. I wanna thank my parents, Jack and Marie, who are with us today. I am so proud to have you as my parents. You are always there when I need you. I can't thank you enough. I wanna thank my brothers Eddie and Jackie, my sisters Katie and Kelly. I wanna thank all of my aunts and uncles, working the polls, walking door to door. My Uncle John walked, I think, every street in Southside with me, and he complained about walking up all the hills, by the way. Making phone calls, making baskets for parties. There's a lot that goes into being and getting elected to office, and they really helped me out. I wanna thank all of my cousins, my sister-in-law, Carrie Cruiser, for all of her hard work on my campaigns. I wanna send a special thank you to my father-in-law and mother-in-law, Jim and Mari Wright, who are here with us today, always on baby duty during campaign events. I appreciate that. And I wanna send a special thank you to my wife's grandmother, Mary McLean. She couldn't be here today, but she was always heavily involved in politics, in Democratic politics, and she worked so hard for me when I first got started, and she really is a class act, so I wanted to thank her for that. And I also wanted to thank all of the volunteers who stepped forward and helped me get elected. I also wanna take a moment to remember my grandparents, who couldn't be here with us today either. Elizabeth and Bill Gahan, and Edward and Helen Trentley. And I have to say something special about my Grandma Trentley, because she was here with us four years ago when I first got elected. She was also involved in Democratic politics from the time she was a little girl until she passed away, really. And she was not afraid to take a stand, and that's one thing that she always taught me, that those who stand for nothing fall for anything. And her father, Edward Nolan, was involved in politics as well. He ran for City Council, he ran for sheriff. He didn't get elected, any of those things, but he took a stand for the people of Southside. And I think that's where, what I learned from going up her house and talking with her often. So I wish she could be here, and I know that she is here with us today. Finally, I wanna thank the people of Scranton for putting their faith in me. I have met so many great families over the last four years. Really, hardworking, blue-collar, salt-of-the-earth men and women who want nothing more than a fair shake, nothing more than to be able to put food on the table for their families. And it really has been one of the great honors of my life to be able to try to help them the best that I can, to speak from these chambers on their behalf, when oftentimes they feel like they don't have a voice. Their problems, their neighborhood issues, their concerns, and their worries have become mine, and that will never change. I can promise you this morning that I will continue to fight for you, stand up for you, ask the tough questions of those in positions of power, and demand that decisions that this administration makes over the next four years are done out in the open and not behind closed doors. Scranton, like many other cities throughout the country, faces many challenges, and it would be very easy for our leaders to shy away from them, to blame somebody else for them, and to pretend that they do not exist. Washington Irving once said, "Little minds are tamed and subdued by misfortune, but great minds rise above it." We must not shy away from these challenges. We must meet them head-on and recognize the opportunities that they present. I am very hopeful that Mayor Courtright and his administration will work closely with this council over the next four years to meet these challenges and to make Scranton a progressive, proactive city which is transparent and works for all of the people. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. I'd like to first start off by thanking my colleagues for selecting me as council president. This has been a long road. I've been on council a number of years now. My journey started about 10 years ago, my first election. Unfortunately, I came a little bit short, but the two people that I lost to, one was Bob McGough, who was one of the best council people the city has ever had, and the other is our mayor, Bill Courtright. So coming in third to those two individuals isn't the worst thing in the world. I would like to congratulate Councilman Gahn on his reelection, congratulate Councilman Donahue on his election, congratulate Councilman Perry on becoming vice president, and not to leave out Mr. Evans, but we're thrilled you're here with us as well for another two years. Running for office and being in office is something a lot more difficult than what you may see on TV during one of our weekly meetings. There's much more that goes to it. It's a 24/7 job, and it's not something that I take lightly. I do wanna thank a few people. I have to thank my beautiful wife, Amanda, who has stood by me during the entire campaign. Hasn't seen me much during the campaign because it's so stressful and a lot of work. Also like to thank my mom, who has been by my side the entire time. Even though neither my mom or my wife care for politics too much, they help me, and they do it because it's something I truly care about and care about for the city. So I wanna thank them for their support. I would like to thank the residents of Scranton for giving me the privilege to serve them for a third term. Third terms in politics are extremely rare, so it's something that I'm very humbled to have that honor of. Over the next four years, there are a lot of challenges that the city faces. But I wanna take a minute to thank outgoing council president Joe Wexler for his leadership through the years, and council president Bob McGough, who's no longer with us. And if it wasn't for those two individuals, we wouldn't have the opportunity we have today to do a lot of the proactive things we're gonna do over these next couple of years to help benefit the city of Scranton. Over the next two years, as I serve as council president, my focus is going to be on continuing the legacy that City Council has had over the last four years. And now that we have finally got ourselves in a financial position where we're not constantly trying to correct the mistakes of the past, to lead some proactive endeavors to help the business community, to help grow our city, create family-sustaining jobs, help our neighborhoods. Basic services are what people come to city government for, and that's our responsibility to deliver those services to the residents of Scranton. So I would just once again like to thank my colleagues for selecting me as president, and especially to the voters for giving me the honor of a third term of being your city councilman. So thank you. I now ask Father Freddie to come forward again and to offer the benediction. If there is no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Our next regularly scheduled meeting will be held on Monday, January 8th, at 6:00 PM. This meeting is adjourned.